Big crowd for a meeting. That's it, we don't have a band anymore.
So you need the lobster feed and a band?
They just talked about the True Mind School thing, he always used to come.
Oh, did they?
Yeah. Nope, yes, I do remember that, yeah.
All right, we've got five o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order today, Monday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Roll call, we have Selectman Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Gene Thurlow, Town Manager Jesse Dunbar, Town Clerk Sarah Hattie. Howdy has called and said he will not be in this evening.
Make a motion to excuse Howdy Goodwin from tonight's meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Howdy Goodwin from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change on the agenda? Okay, first thing, we have a public hearing, um, we have a liquor license and special amusement permit for the word Seaside Dairy Bar and Lobster Pound, which is now um, under the ownership of McAdia Capital LLC. And that's the reason why we have to have a public hearing, right Jesse, because it's changing ownership?
Yep, so they filed a new application with the state, so the new owners apply.
I'll open the public hearing at five oh one. Is there anybody here from um, Seaside Dairy Bar that would like to speak? Okay, any public comment? Mark?
Have they had a liquor license before?
Yes.
When they were licensed?
Yes.
So they could serve liquor from the takeout?
Yep.
By another?
It's just beer and wine is what they were doing, yep, I think is what they said before. Okay, anything else? All right, I will close it, the public hearing at five oh two.
Need to have a motion on that.
A motion to approve the application of McAdia Capital LLC, DVA Seaside Dairy Bar, located at twenty-one Harbor Drive for a state on-premise restaurant liquor license and special amusement permit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application of McAdia Capital LLC, doing business as a Seaside Dairy Bar located at twenty-one Harbor Drive for a state on-premises restaurant liquor license and special amusement permit. Is there any discussion? Usually Jesse, when they swap ownership like that, you just go, you just let it go right through. You don't hear from the new owners or anything?
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're doing the right stuff.
Yep.
Okay, well, do they, do they consider the bathrooms inside of the store as their other bathroom?
They had porta-potties last year.
So you can't use porta-potty for your license, you have to use an actual bathroom.
Yep.
That's up to the state, the state approval before, but um, I'm not sure if there is a bathroom in the Seaside Dairy Bar building. I don't know if there's one physically in there, um, so I don't know what they presented to the state. But that's up to the state.
Have you met these guys, the new guys?
I don't know.
It's hoping to their attorney. You just, you said to their attorney? Wish they came.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have approval of minutes. We have the minutes from March eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve the minutes from March eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from March eleventh, twenty twenty four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Um, next we have warrants, we have warrant eighty-five for thirty-three dollars, eighty-six for thirteen thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-two cents, eighty-seven for one hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-four cents.
Make a motion to approve warrants eighty-five through eighty-seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants eighty-five through eighty-seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have regular business, the first thing we have is a liquor license and special amusement permit for Thurston's Lobster Pound. There's no changes to this, this is just the same renewal as we do every year.
I make a motion to approve the application of Thurston's Lobster Pound, located at nine Thurston Road for state on-premise restaurant liquor license.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the application for Thurston's Lobster Pound, located nine Thurston Road for a state on-premises restaurant liquor license. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have short-term rental application. I know there were some of us that were out, I think two or three, yeah, two of us were out. It was Eric and Kevin, I believe, when this came before, so we wanted to make sure everybody had their what, on this where it's taken some time um, to get it, so. Are there any issues you have with it or questions you have about it, and then also we need to get our fee, figure out what we would like to set for that? Yeah.
Actually, that looks good, the only thing that concerns me is on the checklist, the building code, you know, the numbers on the building code and all that, I don't think where the town uses that at all, so.
No, so I talked to the code officer about that, the town doesn't enforce that, um, the builders are supposed to build to it, um, so this is having the homeowner say it was built to it, but I did ask the CEO, you know, should we take it out because we don't enforce it, or is it fine because they just stated that it was built to the code it was supposed to be built to? And he didn't really see a problem with it, but didn't say it had to be in there either. It's up to your preference.
I know, what is the, the prior to December first, twenty, uh, twenty-ten? And then it says you have to have obviously smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and then it says egress policy, so is that um, just your egress for your windows?
Yeah, but that, that, that's standards after the building was built. So I'm kind of curious how that works. I mean, that's the one that I, it kind of baffled me actually more than the other one. I mean, I'm sitting, I've got rentals, and I don't know if I fit all of those categories because I'm not sure exactly what they are, I know they were built to the, you know, what we had to do at the time. But I don't know that it, I mean, I couldn't tell you what the egress window size is.
Yes, Mark?
I have the same concern as the last time we talked about this, Kevin's expressing, but I have another concern too. Does it, shouldn't they certify that they're complying with the ordinance we're presenting? I mean, what, what the self-certification checklist doesn't include everything in the proposed ordinance, correct?
That makes sense.
So would someone say I comply with the ordinance?
Yeah, that would make sense to me.
Yeah, because if you, if I'm reading this correctly, Mark, if you're, maybe I'm not, but it says structures prior, constructed prior to December first, twenty-ten, must comply with the egress standards and stuff like that.
Okay, I think maybe I'm confusing with that, that was a point concern, the other concern, the proposed short-term rental ordinance itself.
Okay.
Okay, which also says you should provide such things as the numbers of the local fire and police department and that sort of thing, that's not on here, and there's nothing that certifies that they comply with that or other requirements such as the number of people allowed in a rental and that sort of thing. I thought that was in what you originally had.
I know.
It seems like, I couldn't compare the two habits.
I think the only thing we had removed last time was proof of insurance, that was one, I remember that.
Yep.
Yeah.
What else was it, there was one other?
There was another thing.
Yeah, there was one other thing that you said, just ignore it because that's going to be crossed out, I can't think of what it was.
I'm sorry, I, I don't know, I couldn't compare both.
It was the... We took out under local emergency contact information, the first draft said to respond within sixty minutes.
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's exactly, yep.
Yeah.
So we took that out.
Yep.
And the evacuation plan on the checklist, the previous one had an evacuation plan created that we took out because the ordinance doesn't require an evacuation plan.
Um, but I was going to say Keith, maybe this is more your thing, but do you, you know the egress policy, do you know off the top of your head from twenty thirteen, is that going to say you need to have certain size egress windows?
Prior, the egress went twenty feet for windows over five point seven.
Yep.
But that's pretty hard to implement, and also the insulation standard, if it's a ceiling hall cottage, it's never had insulation, it's hard to comply with the building code the way it's specified.
Yeah, but also the, because I, I thought it was going to be um, after two thousand ten, you know, that you have to comply to this stuff, but prior to, I mean, that could be, there's a whole list of places that are going to meet the egress that are, you know, older dwellings or whatever.
Let me hide my voice.
Yeah.
Take those out.
I think so.
Yeah, I think that there's going to be no way to.
My concern was, you know, the general public or people that have these things probably don't even know what that means.
No, I know, and that's, so if you took both of those out.
I would say there, if they are insured legitimately, then as a monthly rental, then part of season by transient rental, and their insurance company will enforce a lot of these on their own ad rail heights.
Yeah, mind this, when they come through and did an inspection and they make sure everything's right up to par, so that's, if you have insurance, then.
You're taking a burden of proof off.
And how do we clear up what you're concerned with, Mark?
You, are you looking for?
My concern is there's an order, a short-term rental ordinance itself, okay? And that somebody who's, has a short-term rental, mu, if adopted, must comply with that, okay? There's nowhere on this form that actually says I attest that, or I certify that I comply with that.
Now, is that?
Either that, or you can use the, put the whole ordinance in there.
Yeah. Does the ordinance, I was going to say, what does that say about the code? Because I'm wondering if that's going to kick back.
I don't recall it ever saying anything about this code, and I think frankly that came from Noel's uh, first iteration of this document, the rental agreement.
Yep.
And it does call.
Registration, I mean.
And the ordinance does specify smoke detectors and carbon monoxide.
Yeah, in, in certain places too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those two sections right there can be completely uneliminated.
Yep.
So you could do, will comply with the short-term rental ordinance adopted in eight thirteen, twenty twenty four?
Yep.
If the town comes up with a policy where they can add occupancy permits, then we can't require rent, weekly rentals to have above ninety-one percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my concern too, Keith.
I know, I don't want to cross off, I know you guys have worked hard on it, and I'm just, I just want it to be, you know, clear and, and have no hiccups with it, that's all.
Yep, I understand, and in fact, I think that uniform, bully code and egress policy is confusing.
Yeah.
And there's nothing here that requires insurance, I agree, the ordinance itself does.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm afraid that.
No, we took that out because of.
Of this, but not the ordinance.
The ordinance doesn't require.
It doesn't, I thought, I thought we eliminated the limit.
On chat, but.
Maybe I will.
We should have had a copy of the ordinance, I guess. How long is it?
I'm going to have some copies on the counter.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, please, Sarah, thank you. Just so we can be sure that we're.
Yep.
While we're doing that, Roberto, we approved the liquor license first thing for um, Seaside Dairy.
Um, well, the, I haven't had a chance to meet him yet.
Oh, okay.
By the way, I've been at a Seaside Dairy Bar for the last three years, so I'm just coming to be helping with them.
Okay. Yeah, did anybody have any questions for them while we were?
You, you've got other businesses already that you're running that have liquor licenses anyway, right? The question did come up about restrooms for the dairy bar. Are those in the building, or are you using the stores, or how do you plan on dealing with that?
So we'll be using the separate buildings, so the convenience park will be left separate, uh, they have their own thing, and the restaurant will have the lobster, you know, the pharmacy.
I, I just, Roberto would know this probably better than anybody, but um.
There is a restroom in, inside the dairy bar, and then there's only one restroom, so we usually, what we've done in the past is we've had a couple porta-potties out there.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Especially when we had music.
Yep. Yeah, I think that was the only question that we had. Mark, this is going to be a page right to the end, isn't it?
Thought we were done with this.
No, I know. Should we talk about fee?
I was just going to say.
Let's, let's talk about the fee, okay. What did the planning board recommended, a range of thirty to seventy-five dollars? Bar Harbor charges two hundred fifty, Mountain Resort is um, what is it, two seventy-five? And that hasn't been voted on yet, correct, yeah, that's what they're proposing?
Yeah.
So, um, I know, we, what do you guys think?
Minimal.
It's a minimal charge, just to help deal with the paperwork a bit, we're just trying to get a clear read on everything.
That was our pillow, we wanted to urge compliance.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Fifty dollars sounds like kind of mid-range, that's our number.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with lower than that, just to make sure that we don't burden people with their.
I'll remind you that it is tax exempt.
Yep. That's, that's per unit, correct? Yes, yep, per registration, so if someone had three of them, then they'd, they'd, for each registration. What do you think, Mackenzie?
I go.
You okay?
I'm going to be quiet, I know it's hard to believe, guys.
Yeah, I think the same, I would say minimal, like Eric said, I'm fine with thirty dollars, like it's just enough to.
You know, probably our disclose, I've got two short-term warrants.
Yeah, we've had every single meeting that we talk about that, so, I think everyone knows by now.
I know, but I just told the disclosure.
So, three C in the inspection has building code requirements.
Yep, just got to it. Just says the code enforcer may inspect.
I don't see insurance.
No, that's what I was.
I'm pretty sure, I'm planning on removing that.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, everyone's piling, and it's noticeable, that's when it's an issue, right?
Yeah.
You see one difference is state of, the proposed uh, application says uh, smoke detectors in the list, say the name Title twenty-five, yet the ordinance says smoke alarms shall be installed in each bedroom, outside each separate area used for sleeping, and in each story of the short-term rental unit, including basements and available attics.
Where are you seeing that, Mark, what's the?
Uh, standards, uh, six C.
Yep, sure.
So there's no, that paragraph, the Title twenty-five, there's no reason to even have that in the thing if you've got something.
Without looking it up, I don't know what it requires.
But I think that's pretty specific in the draft ordinance.
I'm not trying to.
It says just comply with the standards of the short-term ordinance, licensing ordinance.
Outside of each room for sleeping, is that a standard thing? Because I know, I always think of like a hallway or a whatever.
Yeah.
Can't specify a bedroom, because some people use lofts or anything.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
They find all kinds of ways to sleep people with these, from time to time.
All right.
Did you settle on a theme while I was looking at it or not?
No, we were all talking about stuff, Mackenzie won't, but she's, she's quiet. Kevin, you said.
I'm, I'm fine. I mean, it wasn't seventy-five bucks, I'm happy.
Yeah, I don't even like charging residents for it, but if you don't have some kind of fee, why would they even come in, I don't know, I would prefer not to charge residents, but I know then if you split it, then you might run into conflict there, don't you think?
Because they're all, see, and where they're going.
Well, I think at this point, we're just trying to get a handle on how many there are anyway.
Right.
So I think keeping it as low as possible would make sense.
I'd say twenty-five bucks.
What's that?
I'd say twenty-five bucks.
I'm fine with that.
Sounds good.
Um, do you want to set the penalty fee now, I know you talked about jealousy.
Yes, so how would the, I gotta refresh my memory, can't hold on that.
So violations, fines and penalties, owners in violation of this ordinance shall be subject to fines and penalties as set forth in the penalty schedule established by the Selective. Each day a violation shall be considered a separate violation. The fine for being in violation for ten days would be ten times the penalty for being in violation for one day. Any such fines and penalties may be in addition to any suspension or revocation imposed in accordance with other provisions of this ordinance.
So we need to do a, a daily fine?
Or?
So it's a daily, so if, is this for, if someone doesn't have a smoke detector, just say, and?
It's for any violation.
Okay. What about?
If they hadn't registered and are operating.
That's what I was wondering, what about if someone is regis, is not registered and operating? Okay.
The only thing I see is if it's not large enough of a fine, you know, you've got to find that right number where you can't stack up too much, but on the other end, if it's too small, they're like, well, screw it, you know, I don't need to pay that, I'll just make, oh, I'll just pay it and keep plugging away.
I think we should have two separate, a non-registration fine, which should be firmer so that people are encouraged to register, and then a um, safety fine, I, whatever, I don't know if you want to word that, but if you don't have a smoke detector, just say, in the ordinance, then you have, you know, X amount per day until that gets fixed.
Or you have thirty days to fix it, or like if you have an egress issue, you need time to do that.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
It shouldn't just stack up on you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, registration higher.
Yep, I would say like on the, you know, and comply for registration, like two hundred fifty dollars. I know that's high, but that would, that's encouraging people to, to register. No, no, it's a set, set thing, if you do not register to, for a short term, then um, rental, then you will be fined. Two hundred fifty dollars. And then if you're um, and then your daily thing, which would be, like you're saying, Eric, you have thirty days to, how many, however many days, what did you guys, did you talk about that, Mark, as far as how many days to correct something? Like if you, there was an issue with a.
To my recollection.
Okay.
As a enforcement issue, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the code officer usually determines with regular violations of the time, it's usually there, needs for late use.
Okay, so if we just said thirty days, like Eric was saying, you have thirty days to correct this, and then after that, you'll get a, what, daily fine or a one-time fine, or what do you think here?
I don't know, I was more thinking the, because we're really trying to focus on the registration.
Yep.
If it's just two hundred fifty bucks flat, and then it's like, well, you know, that's a couple of days worth of rent, so I'm not going to pay it this year, I'm not going to register, I'm just going to pay the two hundred fifty bucks, and if it doesn't stack up at all, that would be.
Well, to Eric's point, if you want to consider that, if you're contemplating two hundred fifty as a violation, that is the registration fee for Bar Harbor, so they could choose not to, and pay the fine, it's the same thing they pay Bar Harbor to register.
Yeah, well.
Got a question, if you're in violation, should you be allowed to rent?
Well, that's another can of worms, I'm thinking in the back of my head, but I didn't want to spit that out because I think that's a.
Well, I think that's why, like, in violation, you have thirty days, and then it starts stacking up.
Yeah. That's for a violation, but like you're saying, Eric, what if you, if you just say, I'm not going to register?
Right, that means that.
I'll pay my two hundred fifty dollars, and I'm done for the year.
Yeah.
But even that, if there's like violations, like you don't comply with smoke alarms, you're having too many people in the, the, the building in violation, things like that, parking, should you be allowed to rent if you're in violation until you correct those things?
I think there should be a, I know, because I can think of, like you said, an egress for a window of. I think there should be a, I know, cause I can think of, like you said, an egress for a window, if someone came and said, there's a egress, oh, you know, an egress issue, that could take, I, you know, I know I could do it myself, but it's gonna take a lot of homeowners, at least thirty days to find someone. I don't think that they should have to refund everybody's money in the meantime.
I would say that maybe the difficulty in finding someone has to do with short-term rentals, but.
Yeah. Kevin?
Well, first of all, I think the egress section should be taken right out of the agreement anyway, and that's, that's not anyways. Well, I think we're talking about taking that section out of the compliance thing anyway, so that, it wouldn't be an issue like that. I think probably the code enforcement should set the timeframe on it.
Okay.
I mean, if it's a bad battery in a smoke detector, you know, it's, it's, it's not something where they need to stop running, but I mean, I think give them a window, thirty days makes sense to fix it, and maybe a daily fine. And I think, I believe to the code enforcement officer to determine whether it's a violation that means they can't run. I mean, you know, if the stairs are falling apart, it's different than a bad battery in a smoke detector, I mean, something like that, so. I think that'd be a judgment call with code enforcement.
Is that clear enough for you?
That part is, just a note, John, for the amount.
The amount per day for a fee.
The only one that I have, I'm saying as far as however, um, which is fifteen hundred.
And what were they?
For not being registered.
But besides the registration, we're talking?
Right.
Uh, smoke detector, just say.
Right.
Thirty days, and then after thirty days, what is it per day?
We're, we're never even gonna see that unless there's a complaint.
No.
Now, so it's like.
It's a lot of theoretical.
Right, it's the things that we're gonna see is too many people, or, you know, too over, overwhelming parking, or things like that, um, so.
Yeah.
How about twenty-five bucks a day?
Yeah.
That's, it's not too punitive, but it's enough so hopefully people resolve the issue.
You think that's reasonable, Mark?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and if you have tenants for a week, I mean, they need a little bit of time, like, when it's cleaning time, changeover, that's the time when things will get fixed probably, so we give them two weeks, and then it's twenty-five bucks a day?
Mm-hmm.
Unless the CEO says, well, it's a, they've got forty people in a three-bedroom, then that, it's hard to differentiate all these things, but code enforcement could, they need to get the right to make that fee happen now, or give them the two-week grace period.
Yep.
Does everyone put the town up for lawsuits about people who feel they're being discriminated against though?
I don't know, everyone feels like they're being discriminated against these days, so. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
I think it's, yeah, it's a can of worms, the amount of how you look at it, that's all it is, it's just a.
Did that grace period go from thirty days to two weeks?
I think.
I'm just throwing it out there, I wasn't saying that's what it is.
You can't get a window down in two weeks.
But the window parts, I was, so now we're just talking smoke detectors, fire alarms, um, I mean, uh, fire extinguishers. Trying to think of the other thing, occupancy, so, but I think that that should be tended out to immediately, so I don't see an issue with the two weeks of that. Trying to think of anything else that would fall under, um.
What are the standards? Fire extinguishers? Trash removal, and it goes on as we didn't cover, so, most of those should be all fixed in two weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, two weeks is reasonable for that, there's no construction that would have to be done or anything along the lines of that. So if you did, two weeks, twenty-five dollars a day, but I still have an antederection thing, which was, um, if you get a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for not registering, then what is it? Do you have a daily after a certain point, or if you just say the heck with it, I'm not gonna register this year, I'll take my two hundred and fifty dollar?
Yeah, that one needs to accumulate for sure, I would think.
So the way it's written in the ordinance is that it is a daily fee, whatever the fee is, you've set it different for non-registration or whatever, but unless you amend the ordinance for adoption, it's daily, so it'd be two fifty a day.
So if it was twenty-five dollars is what we agreed on in the other one, right?
Yeah, well, this would be a two fifty, the first, like, two fifty, and then every time after that, if it.
It would be two per day.
Oh, it'd be two fifty per day?
Yeah, it's too much.
Until they're registered.
Gotcha.
Just make all of it twenty-five a day.
Yeah, right.
Make all of it twenty-five dollars a day.
That's simple.
Yep. But when does that day start? I know. When's the day you get caught?
When they register the day. Yep.
I don't know, Mark.
How many tickets?
That's why we was, they said, uh, violations also be subject to fines and penalties as set forth in a penalty schedule established by the select board.
Yeah. Thank you very much, appreciate that so much.
Well, you know, what they say about paybacks.
Yeah.
Yes. Do they have thirty days to correct now once they've been found not being registered or?
No, it would be, um, I believe immediate, soon as you're found to be out of compliance, you would start that fine. And that's my only question is, um, so, say, say I didn't register my rental, and you came along and had a complaint, you know, he's renting his house, so you come up, you write me up, and it's June tenth, and I've been renting since March, but I'm not gonna tell you that I have been.
I believe it's just as of that day, you have to stop renting that day until you're registered.
Okay. Day of the complaint.
How are code enforcement's enforcement notices of violation done? On the date, from the date that they're issued, or can you go back?
They're from the date the code observer observes the violation.
Okay, should be the same way then.
Okay. And I don't think that's enough of a fee, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm just.
If you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, I agree with Kevin on doing the daily fee, but I just thought the initial, it should be a little bit higher for one initial hit, just so it gives more people, the people more incentive to register. But.
Twenty-five bucks a day adds up pretty quick though, too.
Oh, yeah, it does for sure. I guess.
So I mean, that's what I was thinking, because.
Yeah.
And your registration fee is plenty, so.
Yeah, we'll keep everything twenty-five.
That's consistent.
Yeah. Keep it fun, okay. This is our trial run at this mark.
Let me make a motion for the, uh, application, how do we need, do you wanna do that, Jesse, with the changes we made on it?
I don't need it, cause we don't.
Okay.
Need it to be done, so I know what you want to change, so typically you don't approve building applications.
Okay.
You're just reviewing this one.
Sounds good.
And the fee schedule, if you, you wanna write something up to the next meeting, we can okay it?
Yeah, I, and I could, might just add it to your regular fee schedule, I do.
Round for your schedule.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, there.
Good.
Sounds good. All right, next we have the Tremont Community Resilience Plan. Jesse?
All right, so, um, the town, as you know, received a grant from the Community Resilience Partnership, the end of twenty twenty-two, and then twenty twenty-three began working on developing the Community Resilience Plan. With the help of A Planet Thrive, um, that's what the grant is to contract with them to help us write the plan. So Bree, um, I'm like from Island Institute, um, she's an Island Institute fellow working with Planet Thrive, has been doing a ton of the work on developing plans with, um, the community, had many listening sessions, gathered input from the community, along with the Sustainability Committee, so there's a couple of members here from that, and Johanna, um, the director of A Planet Thrive is also here to answer any questions you have, um, to look through the plan. The goal of adopting the plan is to, um, it will be adopted by town meeting, um, the goal of the grant is to have it adopted or presented to this town meeting in May for adoption. It would be on the open town meeting floor, um, since your ballot's already done, um, but we also strategically separated it from the ballot, um, just to lessen any confusion with the comprehensive plan, um, that's on the ballot for adoption. But, um, they've done an excellent job with the, um, of the plan, um, so.
So having rushed through all of this break, can you just give us like a quick little bit of detail on what's going on?
Sure thing, um, so the plan, the intention behind it is it for, is for it to be a toolbox that the town can pull from. We got a lot of input from people on what they were worried about, um, and a lot of ideas from people on solutions that might be a good fit. We tried to map out where there were a lot of funding opportunities to make it maybe easy for the town to jump on those as they arise. Um, so there's a lot of strategies in here to try to do our best to cope with the local flooding, to try to bring energy costs down, to make sure that we're looking out for neighbors during power shortages, um, and the only note that I add is that there's something that was long this, it's called an implementation guide, that's not in your packet, cause you know, it's already pretty long, uh, but that just keeps track of, you know, what would the grants be that would give you the money to actually do these things in the plan, if you decide to move forward with them. Yeah, nothing in here obligates the town to do anything, adopting it isn't gonna cost anybody any money, it's just a toolbox, um, that you can decide to move forward with. It's like, okay, I have a little review.
That's good, thanks.
And, um, I'm also happy to answer questions about this at any point after tonight, um, thank you, that's all, but it's not. I live in Suppo, so you can find it.
I got one question for you, Bree. The page with the map, it sounds like Natural Resources and Solutions. It's, uh, talking about natural community, it says low elevation bays.
Oh, okay. I heard that same question from someone else, that is park service, it's what they call like mountain tops where there aren't any trees.
Okay, I was curious about that, but I hadn't heard that term before.
That's a good one.
Okay, that one might wanna be modified slightly, somewhat make sense with.
You have a big guy saw, and you only found images. I think some people might not be able to recognize where they sit in the images, so it would be good to have a point on each image to say this is up to the nose, they were too pretty.
Oh, I know where that building is, I know where that written is.
Yeah, so there's one there, I couldn't even figure out where ours and others.
That's a good point, like having a reference to people in the grant that's all in the map.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, um, Jesse, I don't know if it is possible to be changed at this point, but I'd be happy to address those. Yeah, and you are here, huh?
Yeah.
Or this is here.
Or the name of a road, or something that you could worry.
Definitely.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Looks great.
Oh, it looks really good.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work.
All right, great ideas from people who.
Okay, yeah, good.
There was a past chair of the Sustainability Committee, I would like to, uh, offer my gratitude and thanks to the entire town, particularly as represented by the board for the support. I mean, this page in the community meetings was very good and very, very helpful. And, and the great work that Bree and all of the folks at A Planet Thrive has done, I really appreciate it, it made our job a lot easier. It was a great contribution, so thank you all.
I make a motion to authorize the town manager to place the Tremont Community Resilience Plan on the twenty twenty-four town meeting warrant and to recommend adoption by town meeting.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to place the Tremont Community Resilience Plan on the twenty twenty-four town meeting warrant and to recommend adoption by town meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the hard work.
All right, next we have EV chargers. I'm gonna let you run with that one, Jesse, I'm, I can't remember when we signed up for this, so.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Um, so.
That's what Mackenzie does, she just says, I'll throw him under the bus.
The first grant, um, through the State's Community Resilience Partnership, um, program that the town, uh, received was a joint grant with the Town of Bar Harbor and the Town of Mount Desert, um, for the three towns to install EV chargers, with the intent of offering them to, um, year-round residents of the towns. So the Sustainability Committee, since then, has, um, been working on proposed locations for the chargers. They've gone through some different options, they've gone to the Harvard Committee for feedback on placing them near the Wharf, um, and they've settled on, um, the Renard Road parking lot and the Marsh Road block near the school. Anyone from the Sustainability Committee or Kevin can add more details to this, um, but in your packet is a proposal from MCM Electric for installation of those, uh, chargers. The town received right around thirty thousand, um, as a whole from the grant, um, you see the proposal? Is just over thirteen thousand for the four chargers. The grant does need to be wrapped up and finished, project paid for by maybe fifteenth of this year. Their town harbor is not able to extend the grant, I'm gonna check that, so, um, bringing it to you for your feedback, and whether or not you'd like to proceed with this proposal.
So, talking to you earlier, Jesse said the Lawson lot there was, I don't think that's a good spot, uh, just because it's packed full of people, cop vehicles for outer islands, and there's just not enough room in there for overflow from the town to have to start with, so.
It's a tricky spot.
I think the school, that dirt parking lot there, that's a great spot, and if we could find another spot, maybe further up the backside or here.
Oh, the discussion, excuse me, the discussion with the Harvard Committee actually suggested up there. And I've been talking with Jesse and looking at the parking lot, I, I think if we changed the parking lot around up there, it'd make more sense anyway. That whole script where you parallel park, you know, on the, it'd be the north side of the, if you put drive-in parking, get rid of that center parking, it'd make a lot of sense. I don't know if you ever tried backing a trailer through there in the.
Oh, I've been through that parking lot in every different.
Everyone parks all over the place, so I think.
That's what I'm saying, it's a cluster, which is.
Yeah, I think if you put it, we're talking about putting them down where that basketball net was, on that pole, far way down.
Well, that was just a discussion with the Harvard Committee though, right? So the other option was down at the Town Wharf, or, or somewhere around, you know, that had to deal with harbor parking, so can we think about maybe something that has nothing to do with harbor parking, a different location is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, there's not too many other gathering spots around.
I know, that's why I'm asking if we can think about it.
Yeah, well, we have a lot, it's been going on for a while.
Yeah.
You do have to watch out for that log, because I know the Lawsons had a right-of-way that runs through there. You have to be careful on how that runs, um, I don't think you can reconfigure that parking lot much, because of, I'm pretty sure, if I remember right, that was set up for that reason.
They have specific parking spots, I think, that go over that house.
But they're, they're, they're on the.
I don't know why they are covering a lot.
Southern side.
You know, I think that whole, I'm, I'm thinking that whole side has to be open towards the house.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Swipe.
If you, if you put, you know, drive-in stalls, you know.
Yeah.
Like out here.
Yeah.
Where, however you refer to those, along the far side from them.
Okay.
You could get as many and eliminate that center parking area.
Yep, gotcha.
So I think to me that would make sense, and just.
Yeah, if you could.
Cause everyone, everyone in the middle there, they, no one parks in a line, I mean, I've. Because everyone, everyone in the middle there, they, no one parks in a line. I mean, I've tried backing a trailer, well, I've done it. It's extremely difficult, the way people park in that center group.
And we might have to be a little bit more strict about what hangs out in that parking lot because that parking lot is full of everything under the sun in the back of it.
Well, it's also the boat trailer overflow.
Yeah.
For when you launch your boat and, you know.
That's true.
Yeah, but if you, if that center was eliminated, you could back all the way right to the back of that with the trailers, which is usually what I try. But it is challenging.
This is geared towards residents, right? I mean, the thoughts goes, do we have that many electric cars? I mean, some.
There are going to be more.
Yes, Mark.
Is there a charge for using this service?
It's not being set up with one. It could be modified if it needs to be.
But it's not being set up for one?
No.
But did I hear Jesse say that it's only for Tremont residents?
The grant wants it geared towards...
The grant what?
Wants it geared towards in locations where residents would use it more than tourists.
So there's no way to prevent people under it, only residents using it, right?
No.
Okay. Who pays for the electricity being used by these things?
I do, Mark.
You do?
Yeah.
I do.
He does.
That's what I'm thinking. Why are we subsidizing this? Why are taxpayers subsidizing the charging of electric cars?
Trying to promote cleaner energy. And besides, I don't, I believe it's, we're still getting more power out of the solar ray than we're using, so it isn't...
Are we really? Isn't the solar ray supposed to power both the school and this town office?
And the public works building.
Is it doing that?
Yeah.
You're saying yes, he's saying no.
It's not on the fire.
Ah, it's still on the fire. I couldn't, because it's not generating enough. So, yeah.
So the school and town office are paying the minimum payment. I don't remember what they call it.
Yeah, check the warrants. You can see right on the warrant.
Well, I don't know. You're, you guys...
No, there was only, there was one time when it was broke down, Mark, when it had, it had some issues last year about this time, maybe in the winter, February or something. And so we had some electric bills that came all of a sudden, before Jesse even knew anything was wrong. There were some electric bills, but other than that, I think it's been...
If it is generating excess electricity, can it, that excess electricity be used to offset the bills from other town facilities such as the Harbor Master Shack?
And our...
Whatever, rather than this sort of thing?
All, all the municipal meters are on the solar right and covered by the solar right currently.
Okay.
Including the community building, the school, these two buildings, Harbor, Shack, Library, Pacific Hall.
They're all on that. But, but nobody has, nobody has actually told me definitively, definitively that there's excess power after paying all those bills.
There is excess power.
There is?
In most months.
Most months. So it can vary, okay?
They wouldn't use, we can't store it, correct?
Yeah, it's a twelve month...
There's no battery storage. I understand that, yeah.
It's a twelve month roll.
Goes into the grid.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So how do these chargers usually work? When you pull up to a charger in Bangor, what's the fee? How does that work?
Some, some there's fees where some there aren't. Basically, these are going to be level-two chargers. They're not that fast. You're not going to plug...
They're level-two chargers, right?
Yeah.
So we're talking...
Can I, can I finish, can I finish?
Drive.
Can I finish, please?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. They're not that fast. No one's going to sit there and charge a car in an hour or two. This is, it's going to be basically geared towards residents. Someone that can plug the car in overnight or a stern man who's going out fishing for the day can leave it plugged in and probably charge his vehicle. A tourist is going to be there for an hour, isn't going to get much benefit of plugging into one of these chargers. The ones that you see charged for mostly are the high-speed DC fast chargers. And, and those are the ones that usually tend to meter them. There's not going to be a lot of electricity used at these.
So will there be time limits? I mean, you're talking about a stern man charging his electric vehicle and going out for the day. I want to charge my electric vehicle and he's sitting there, he's already charged. So wait, deal with that, I mean?
No.
No, okay.
Put a note on the card and say, be courteous next time.
Unplug him and plug him beside him.
Well, yeah, maybe courteous is...
I've heard that's happened.
Safety concerns. How about ballards or any kind of curving being proposed for this to keep cars from backing into the electronic, the electrical system?
They're pole mounted. You're going to have to telephone pole.
What's that?
They're going to be pole mounted.
Off to a pole?
Yeah.
But still nothing is protecting that pole, right?
Not anymore. That protects some of the other poles in town.
Yeah, but they don't have chargers on.
They have other stuff.
So I have a Ford truck of seven point three motor. It takes a lot of gas, but we have a high test that's all.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to be standing out there handing out twenty dollars.
Get the Sun Power Station, the generators, P D C, we'll be glad to plug you in.
No, I just, but I, I guess, I was concerned, I mean, I had asked about excess of electricity. I mean, I don't accept it, but for the fire stations, we pay twenty-seven, twenty-seven hundred dollars here for it. So if there is extra, I'd be nice with the budget that. I, I would like to see safety standards of some sort. I don't know whether they have local problem, maybe that's new. It sounds like we got to change parking ordinances and sign ordinances and stuff to make these compliant.
That's true, yeah.
But, no, I, I don't know. I just, my concern is the expense of in year three, if they stop working, who's on the hook to repair them and maintain them and that sort of thing? But that's it. Okay.
Yeah, and I think, I do agree with Eric on, I think the, the school location is perfect. I think that's, the parking lot is not very full. At the most, I mean, during school hours or special events, it's always full, but there's room there. It won't cost a ton because you can dig into it too and do whatever you have to. There's room enough to put a barrier around the charger if you want to do. But I think that Lawson lot, you're gonna, you're gonna struggle to find room to put it in, and make it work.
Did you guys talk about here?
Park there.
That's it.
Did the committee chat about maybe this parking lot?
Yeah, we've already got one.
Already got one, remember on the corner.
Yeah, well, I know, but if we need space for two more.
We were, we were looking at the Lawson lot.
Yep.
We really wanted to, if that building that you're tearing down down there and we'd be starting at some point, would really be ideal to have one down there so that, because it was geared towards locals, right? Who can park down there, but locals, fishermen or whatever, right? So we really wanted it like down there so that they could have better access. But we can't because of, you know, the current going underwater business, you know, that's happening. So like, I think it would be something that, that the, whatever committee this is that we're talking, I mean, what's the name of this committee?
Sustainability Committee.
Sustainability, but, you know, it would be ideal that if that structure was rebuilt within the, within the guidelines of non-flooded, that we might be able to find a way to have a couple of spaces that is not taken up by the current parking. That's now, like we were talking about it, we're thinking about digging into the dirt, you know, and making a couple of specialized parks so we're not taking away from anything else. That would be ideal. And then we, we are targeting locals down there because tourists can't park down there unless it's the middle of the night. You know, so that kind of stuff is what we looked at first, but it wasn't allowed by, or it wasn't, it was discouraged.
Yeah.
So that's how come we went up top to give access to the local fishermen. We have this, in reality though, a local like myself, you know, I'm not going to drive over there to park my car to charge. You know, if I have an electric vehicle, I'd like to charge it at my house, you know, or at the school where I work, you know, something like that. Even at the school, it's a good idea, like we say, because there's a lot of people who work there. And even if people who use the community center for various activities, that would be available for them. So we're really trying to get it to the most available people. Yes, it is a low, low rate of charge. The terminology is not my friend here. But it's a slow charging situation, but that's okay. But now, we don't have that many electric vehicles floating around, but we would like to have more. And you know it's going to go in that dress. I mean, all automotive people aren't procuring up for that already. So as they progress, maybe we can think about other areas, you know, and, and make it available for other people.
Elaine, you want to speak to Austin White when we look at the school as a perspective?
No, I would if I were to serve. Well, you know, the thing about the school is when the school is in session, you know, there's, there is use over there. You don't, you could use it. When school is not in session, what is there to do in that four or five hours if you're charging? There's no downtown Tremont. You know, there's no walking area that you can go for a little hike.
Oh, you can walk right up to Marsh Road.
Then they have done that and the speed goes a kind of nasty. So, so that's the thing, right? You want to make it so that people can use them and, and be able to access them. And that was one of the reasons why that was originally thought of as Area Two.
Yep.
You know, like I can usually use this one and walk the two tenths of a mile back to my house, you know, while it's charging. You guys can't.
No, and I can't imagine down at the town dog would be a nightmare as far as, because that's permit parking only until noon every day, so they...
But again, we were thinking about, you know, fishermen, right?
So what about up at the top of the hill there, you know how we have three parking lots?
Yeah, we got like eight of them.
Whatever. The very top one that doesn't get used.
That's going to be no fancy though.
That's stern man parking only. We've, we gotta figure out what that is.
That's just been graded out too. That was a lot better.
But that's something that we can think about moving forward, right?
Yep.
We can always think about that moving forward. We only have, what, two or three of these that we are getting?
Two locations, two, two at each location.
So, so you know, it's not the end of the world right here. But that is definitely something that I think that we should put into our future planning. You know, like my, my thought is, is seal, seal code, you know, area. But again, you know, like planning on, on rebuilding that or building it to deal with resilience, all that kind of stuff. It's kind of put this in the thought too because of, you know, probably will be some kind of electric, like a rope of some kind that it would be convenient and even those little skips that you can plug in. You know, there, there will be that possibility in the future. And what is the whole primary goal of this town is to keep it as a workable one for, as fishermen progress or are forced to progress because of the conditions of our universe here. We should have at least a plan. Mike, we don't have to put it in, but we should be planning for the opportunity to put one in. Should it, should it get to that point?
I agree with that, but we don't pay for fishermen's fuel now.
And we can always put a charging meter on this, you know, where you put it.
Well, that, yeah, yeah.
That's okay.
That's what I'm wondering, why aren't you doing that now?
Because it costs more to put the metering system on than it does to give the electricity away.
And also keep in mind that the grant...
Yes, go ahead.
Keep in mind that the grant, and the purpose of the grant was promote or use for electric vehicles. And, and with a focus on the town, that the town would use it. And those folks believe that there will be much more, even though some of our fishermen may believe they'll never go electric. We'll see what happens.
Right, but, but, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
So we're getting it for free basically, being granted, and electricity costs almost nothing.
For now.
All right.
You can change on mine later.
Yeah, I'll just say that the opportunity to promote it is by putting these stations around town. Has nothing to do with paying for the electricity to charge your car. I'm just saying, you know, that's the opportunity. They're giving us a grant to make it available for people around town, not to pay for it. So that's the only thing that I see there.
And that's a big point.
That's a big part of it though. That's a big, a big price. Keep that in mind. Without it, that kind of, we wouldn't...
Well, you know, people all over the world, they're all over the world now, or all over the US, are paying at, at different locations. So it's not something that's outside their realm. If this board, you know, decides that you want to put a, a charging meter on it, you know, okay. You know, it, it could be to make them available for first year maybe, have it not, but we can go in whatever direction we want.
Okay, yes, you're welcome.
So I, I hope that I was not working on this particular grant. This is one of the different committees. As Jesse said, it's the first grant that three towns applied together. There are parts of that grant that we helped with, but this part was one that the committees went for. But I do know, because I've had conversations with the other two towns, that Our Harbor and Mount Desert are both installing networked chargers. So that means that they will charge at the, for when we charge at those charging stations. And I would also just suggest that if you think that is something that the town would lean more towards, I wouldn't, I would look at, I think it can be tricky to make that transition ultimately. It's better to start that way.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Could you go back to Mike Muzetti and have him redo his quote and add the, the money part to it? But there's enough money in the grant, right? Like we have thirty thousand dollars and this is like thirteen. I mean, is that something you even look into or?
No, that's possible. Again, the only thing is, it's probably going to cost more to put the meter on it than it's going to bring in an income.
But we have a grant to pay for that, so we're not paying.
But there's a monthly charge.
Oh.
For the billing.
Yes.
That's where, that's where...
Didn't get that part, okay.
Yeah, that's the part.
All right.
Of course there is.
Of course there is.
Well, it's going to have some kind of...
But it sounds like it makes a good idea to like show that.
Get the numbers.
Yeah.
And the biggest thing for tonight is location is what I'm thinking because...
Well, I don't know if it would make sense, but if you're going to meter it, if you get down to one location with four chargers.
Right.
That might make more sense. Put them all in one spot. And then you're only getting one networking charge with four potential charging sites. That might make an income stream that makes sense.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if it's at, I'm just saying, if it is at the school, we have built all these nice sidewalks from there and there is places to eat nearby, walking distance. So it's not a terrible idea to stack them there. I really don't like the Lawson lot just because it's already jammed.
No, that makes sense. Well, if you'd like, why don't I go back to Mike and get a quote for network meters, billable meters?
And see what the monthly is.
And four of them at the same place.
Yeah, and then just bring back the monthly fee and the, what you think revenue would be. Just as, I know that term, but I mean, even if you had, you know, estimate how many...
I don't know.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be minimal to start with.
Yeah.
But as people get more cars, sorry.
You could ask, some of the Tarver has chargers, you could ask them how much love and charge in there or ask Mount Desert, they have a networked one, how much they already, how much they've been bringing in. You could get like comparable.
In a way, because Mount Desert and Our Harbor have a lot of parking, a lot of people visiting them, a lot of reasons to be in those towns. We don't have that. So when you're talking about how many people can you get hooked up to those things? You know, one a day is, I mean, okay, you have a freeway right here. How many people do you have here? You have one a day?
Uh, yeah. I just, I think there's about four cars, but switching to four residents at that.
In the summertime, different?
No, it's about the same.
So I think that would be primed to use one day. I don't think we can even think that we're going to get, the only other thing that's good about that is that's where the bus stops.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And, you know, we could, you know, have it so that when they're on their little bus trip.
Yep.
You know, they could do that.
Well, you'd also get the school, you know, people that work at the school, they may be using it regularly.
You know, a good idea to in the future, maybe not that, would be to attach one to the school and use the school for our school personnel.
That didn't seem to get much support last time we talked about that.
No, we did talk about that to the school. It didn't get that much support, but there's, you know, ways around it because we could put it at the bus garage because of... because we could put it at the bus garage, because the buses, the buses are going to get a charging randomly here too. You know, so.
Mark.
Any idea what that monthly fee is?
I don't know.
Yep.
Yeah, I haven't worked on this yet. It depends on which service you go through too. I know on the island, Mount Desert has used OptConnect, and they are now using, yeah, and which is not what you want to go with. And now you can charge point, um, for the new installation, Far Harbor is using ChargePoint, but this is not something that I've worked on.
Two other questions, do you propose lighting for these things?
We haven't.
Okay. And, uh-
Actually, one of the, the Lawson lot has a light on pole currently.
Yeah, it's already there, yeah.
It's already there.
Uh, maintenance, are there ongoing maintenance costs with these things?
I don't think so.
There's not.
Not that major, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. I would urge you to put Walbert in or Kirby in some kind of, just for the safety measure.
Well, if we did four, we would probably-
Probably have money in the grant for that.
Yeah.
Keith.
I think it's been a great conversation, I feel better about it. Thanks, Mark. No, Elaine's always right. I, I swear to God, I, I believe her, I do. I, I'm glad to discuss you, but my only thing was, in, in the grant, does it specify if they become damaged or unusable? Do we have to replace them, or, and, and that was my only, I, I thought, just, they're giving it to us, we don't have to maintain it. It's like, some of the equipment we get at the grants, we have to maintain for several years, that would be, I would be certain.
The units themselves aren't that expensive.
I would think so.
No, I mean, as far as replacing, they're a few hundred dollars, they're not, it's not thousands.
And if you don't think they'll get lightly damaged, I guess, but I, I do think there's something. But I would be concerned if we need to change the parking ordinance or specifically so those have to be signed technically for. I'm not, I think, that's a great, great conversation.
This is a marsh. So, fruit lot and the black lot, are they the same thing, or are they two separate? The marsh road lot's a one farther down.
That's a mess, Mark, don't even go there. I don't know which, which one is which, that piece of property is cut like this, so you could be in one lot.
And it's named five different things.
Because I'm thinking this is going to go in the, the black lot, what I call the black lot right across from the school.
I call it the mercy lot, yeah.
Okay, but I saw here it's the marsh road lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Call it what you want it, Mark, but it's across from the school.
Okay.
Right around the corner.
Yeah, yeah. So, does it sound like everybody just would like to get numbers on how much it would cost? See if we can get that included in the grant, um, the metering, I know nothing about this. And then also, um, have Kevin check on the metering fee to see what it would be for your monthly subscription.
And, and put four chargers at that location? Get a quote for doing that?
Yep, I, I think that I would put them all in that one.
I think so, just because, I mean, it would be great to have it in Bernard, but there's just not enough room.
Well, yeah, that is a challenge. The only other thing I was thinking of is even if you put them there, not sign them exclusively for EVs, just have anyone park there, and that would take care of the summer crowding, and the rest of the year is not an issue. You could actually put a sign up in the winter, possibly. But, I mean, but again, that's just-
Yeah, if you go there spring, summer, and early fall, like, that parking lot is solid for every single day.
And also go on our, like, Gott's Island.
They're gone for days on end.
Residents, or whatever.
Yeah, I still think changing the parking lines in there would make a big difference.
Yeah, no, and I, I think that's a great idea, if, as long as just make sure that we check out the, the right of way that's in.
Yeah, I think it's all on that other side.
Yep. So, I know this goes against, uh, having it be less expensive if they're all in the same spot and we meter them, but what about two in Bass Harbor at the parking lot at the post office?
That's permanent parking now.
Permanent parking there.
And also, it's so rough right now. If we get it finished off a little bit better.
Those electric cars would be bottoming out.
Yeah.
It's a great thought.
See, the battery is right out of them.
I mean, even though it's permanent parking, you could have two slips that were right beside it, but it's just so rough.
I, I think you want to rearrange stuff a lot before you do that there.
That needs some love.
I think that this all should be in future planning, you know, where should be the most ideal places around town if we were to expand. You know, I mean, every committee that's out there should be having that in the back of their mind, in, in some factors. And what, what are we really talking about here? We're really talking about those residents who can't have their own solar on their roof for whatever reason. Or they can't afford it, or their houses are renovated the wrong way, especially if we want locals to be able to use it. Someone from Seal Cove cannot make it over here to charge, you know? So that's, we're trying to make life affordable moving forward for residents that may not be able to afford it.
Well, you've also-
Possibly, you know, we don't have that yet, but you'd like to get there. So, keep that in the back of your mind when you're thinking about these things, because it's not only for the rich and things, they can have their own charging stations at their own houses.
A lot of times you got renters too, and they can't install.
It's really not that expensive to install it in your house, right? Uh, this level two charger.
You have to get an electrician to show up.
Well, I, I understand that.
I told you about six hundred dollars.
Oh, we went back to the rental.
Mark, to put a level two, it's about six hundred dollars.
About six hundred dollars?
Yeah, you have to, you have to-
That's with installation?
No.
Uh, well, you've got to have a, the charger itself's about six hundred dollars.
Oh, oh, the charger's six hundred dollars.
For the, for the, uh, level two.
Level two.
And that's a, uh, and it doesn't take much electric, but you need a two twenty.
Right, yeah.
Sometimes you-
It's what, forty amps, right?
Yes.
Well, they, they vary, but you, you're still going to get someone to come out and wire it, Mark.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And again, if you're a renter, you're not going to do that.
Yeah. Oh, it's just-
Yeah.
Pacific Hall, that has been useless for every other thing.
Yeah.
You just make it a parking lot?
For four vehicles.
Yeah, an electric vehicle parking, charging station.
Okay, next.
Okay, yeah. All right, do you have everything you need, Jesse, good for that?
Yeah.
All right, moving on. Brown-tail moth grant.
So, we received a grant from the State Department of Agriculture and Forestry, um, to help with brown-tail moth mitigation. Um, we received a grant, fifty-five hundred dollars, it's a reimbursable grant, so we submit our expenses to the state for reimbursement. Um, the grant application that they approved, um, includes funds for the town itself to remove, um, brown-tail moths from any public lands. I know we have some out on the civil picnic area that Public Works needs to remove. Um, and then in addition to that, it can be used to reimburse, um, households for expenses that they've, um, taken off to remove their own, um, their own property. Um, we can purchase tools that the residents can come borrow, uh, through the grant, or they can apply for a grant reimbursement for tools that they choose to purchase, or, um, as they've hired somebody to come treat the trees or remove them. Um, the only requirement from the state is if they're treating the trees with a pesticide, but it has to be done by a licensed, um, applicator, um, which is included here in the grant. Um, so I've just pulled together a policy and an application, um, to use the, um, eating grant that I had as a template for the policy. So, I don't know, have any questions, or any changes to it?
It's good to me.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'll make a motion to adopt the brown-tail moth mitigation assistance program and application.
Second.
We're moving second into adopting the brown-tail moth mitigation assistance program application. Is there any discussion? Almost in favor? All right, next we have the FY twenty-five budget prep for the Warf Harbor Seal Cove budgets. Jesse, maybe that's why I get a little hitched cold, it was on the menu.
Taking a favor?
You go back in there?
I would, just to give my final, you know, like, sign of, I was like, maybe just check, just to be sure. That was a big mistake.
Just to be sure, maybe it's gotten better.
Anybody who has any questions about the Warf House being in bad shape, they can go in on their own time, that's bad.
It's a whole ecosystem.
It was pretty bad, I was in there, I've been in there for a couple of years.
It is, no, it's not, you know, there's a little bit of grass growing on one end of the floor now, and that's coming down from the ceiling, it's awful. It's not one thing in there that's any good.
Um, so we'll go over the proposed budgets, um, and then we can have a conversation about that Warf House. So, on the Warf side of things, um, in the Warf Fund, there's not too much, um, changes on the revenues. Permacies are down a little, um, based on last year's, um, numbers. Um, we use the average of the last couple of years, um, so that's why that's showing down a little. Um, the, we do need to talk about the, uh, Warf Garage rent in just a minute, but, um, on the expense side, you'll see the first item, item there, the working capital, twenty thousand, quarter fifty-six, um, is zero this year as we paid off that loan for the Warf construction. Um, boat maintenance and repairs, um, minimal changes there. All, all of the supplies, those things are based on averages of the last couple of years. And then, one thing down through, uh, operating transfers out. Last year we transferred five thousand to the Warf Capital Reserve. This year it currently has, um, ten thousand, um, but we'll talk about that in a minute as well, when we talk about the Warf House. And the last item down there, the transfer to other funds, you'll see, um, that's where we previously transferred out to the harbor master salary, um, which we talked about not doing that transfer this year. So, the bottom line is that the expenses are significantly down, um, from previous years, which brings us to a positive, um, revenue of, projected revenue of forty-one thousand, five eighty-five, which would build the fund from its current thirty-one thousand up to seventy-three thousand.
That's before Eric's bill. You must have scratched that off.
So, yes, the expenses from the storm damage are not in here, um, because we're waiting for, hopefully FEMA reimbursement, um, and we'll see what amount they reimburse, so that will affect, um, that fund balance, um, at some point. Um, I did have a phone conversa, Zoom conversation today with, um, Island Institute. I will be applying for, um, their shore up grant, um, to see if we can get some of the things that we've done to improve the Warf, um, that FEMA won't cover, um, see if we can get some of that covered by the grant from them, um, which is designed to help you, um, shore up the facilities, um, against the future coastal change, um, which is the one thing FEMA does not reimburse for is improvements to prevent it potentially. Um, do you want to talk about the Warf House now, or you want to go through each budget first?
Let's go through each budget first.
In the harbor fund, um, again, um, no significant changes to the revenue based on averages of the last couple of years. On the expense side, repairs and maintenance, um, all those items are minimal, changes down through. Again, you'll see the change of, with the removal of the harbor master reimbursement.
We had a question, Jesse.
Um. Yep.
When I saw donations, Swans and Alpharetro again, did we ever get anywhere with that? I know that was a-
So, I reached back up to both of them, um, Friday, and I did just hear from Swans today that they went there, including the three thousand dollar option that you gave them.
Okay.
Um, so, I would anticipate based on all of these things going on at the Warf, um, that we probably will do that replacement this budget.
Yes.
Since we have to carry the bill.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, with everything happening now.
Yeah, so, I don't know, we can plan for that, knowing that. If you have to do the three thousand, I have not heard.
When do those usually go in?
Um, mid, mid to late April.
KJ hasn't gotten back to me.
Okay.
I keep bugging him, but he keeps forgetting, so I'll get on him again, so, because we need to get that taken care of.
Yeah. Um, so you'll see similar to the Warf, the harbor fund is projected to have excess revenues, potentially thirty-eight thousand, bringing the fund balance up to sixty-four. Um, Seal Cove, um, bare minimal changes due to the budget.
Did that ramp ever get fixed?
No, anyways, no. Um, we just had a conversation, um, today with Public Works, um, Howdy, not even proposed that maybe we should just look at filling it in with cement versus taking it out and putting it in. Maybe we should just fill the holes and-
Yeah, why not?
Yeah, by, probably five years.
All right.
So, we're gonna look at that.
But we have extra compu-
Yeah, we do.
Pad thingies, right?
Just a matter of getting someone to do it.
Yeah.
Or the town crew is going to do it, I can't remember.
That's what we determined, that the town crew is going to do it.
Yeah, they've gone, we've gone backwards before.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we do have them, yes. Uh, meeting, um, Public Works up there to run around, to talk about some things to work on.
Someone that's done it before can probably put that in in two hours, you know.
Not long.
Now, just the, the replacement trucks.
Yeah, just the, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, not much difference within Seal Cove, we can see that the end is projected to have excess revenues of just over a thousand dollars, which is similar to what tested it for this year, bringing that fund up to eighteen thousand.
Okay.
Any questions before we? Um, so, back of the Warf, um, I've been talking with the harbor master about the plans for the Warf House and the buildings that we have talked about, building or not building, uh, to replace it for the harbor master. Um, and we've recently been talking about the idea of, um, reutilizing the Warf garage that we currently rent out as a town garage for the harbor master to work on boats and put boat in, um, and therefore significantly shrinking the size of what we would need to replace, um, cost-wise, construction-wise, um, down where the house is. Um, we'd be looking at just replacing it with essentially something slightly larger, three times as large as the shack itself, um.
That's the best idea I've heard so far.
Wow.
I didn't know, I didn't take so long to think of that one.
So, typically, I think typically we're pretty reliant on the rent, and that, I think that's kind of why we haven't really dove into it. Um, but now with the changes to the fund, um, with the debt service paid off and the harbor master moved, um, you can see here, if you take out the rent, um, you're still projected to profit thirty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, that's a- Yeah, I mean, that's a-
So it's not, you know, it's not a significant impact to do that. The tenants that are there are just on a month, a monthly lease, if you recall. They did not want to do it yearly. And it seems like from conversations Harbor Masters had with them, they probably will not have any issue getting it out.
Throw anybody out.
Um.
They're not using it.
So we did, we did bring it up to the Harbor Committee at their last meeting and they all loved the idea and said to send it on to you with their recommendation. So we've been doing improvements to the parking lot down there. The neighbor contributed too and then you guys authorized improvements too. As well as the upper, the upper, upper parking lots has been getting some improvements done in the last week. We had a contractor come out and give us an estimate on removing the Wharf House and that estimate, because I don't know if we've ever officially gotten one with somebody actually coming in. So the estimate from GOTS to remove it is sixty-five hundred dollars, which is pretty, but I-
Very reasonable.
Very reasonable. Um, if we can get the power unhooked and you're all good with it, we'd like to remove it in the next three weeks or so.
Wow.
But leave the foundation so it grandfathers us for-
We don't need to leave it. The DEP has responded that the Harbor Master facility is considered a water-dependent use. So therefore there's no setbacks or anything required, so we can go wherever we want. So there's no time frame, there's no grandfather status for the water-dependent use.
Yeah, that's the way to go, sure. Because it's gonna cost us way more than we make with the rent to build the facility that has been proposed.
Yes, so I would say the proposed facility that we've talked about a couple of times is easily gonna be two hundred plus thousand. I think roughly discussing it with the Harbor Master, the improvements to the garage and a new facility down below, I think you'll be able to do for around fifty or less.
Yeah, instead of twenty years of renting that place out to pay for, yeah, that's a no-brainer.
Um, so with that said, as far as removing the Wharf House, I would recommend, I'd recommend you split the fee right now with the Harbor Fund and the Wharf Fund. Because the Harbor Fund obviously requires a Harbor Master facility, so I think you can split it between those two funds. I've been trying to look into revenue sources for the continued work with this idea, with this plan. One thing that's come up that I've checked with the auditor on and I'm checking with you tonight is the excess revenue that we received from the Versant Power lease next door. There's no specific use for that money right now. The auditor said if you want to place that on the warrant to ask the town to approve using excess revenues from Versant Power to the Wharf Fund for projects at the Wharf, you could add that to your town meeting warrant. If you want to do something else with it, you can add that to the town meeting warrant. After town meeting, if you hadn't put it on the warrant, it'll just show up in your surplus next year. And you can either move it to surplus or you can encumber it at that point somewhere else. But you will have to encumber it to a regular town department, you can encumber it to the Wharf. That would actually, whereas a separate fund, you have to have the voters on there doing that, which would need to happen in this town meeting or a special town meeting. If you, I don't know if you have any thoughts on what you wanted to do with that revenue, but-
Also the increase of taxes.
I think it would probably cover most of the work that they want to do with the Wharf.
We don't want to use that money from Versant though to push towards the public safety building.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the whole point of that spot, but I don't know. I mean, either way, it's a great-
And the other thing I was thinking was towards buying the array, which makes sense, you know, towards that. But, you know, any of those I think are all good uses.
Yeah, I think the Harbor, I mean, we've been talking about this since I've been on the select board and it just keeps getting kicked down the road and I think it's a, the things are rolling a little bit now. I went down and met with Jesse and contractor down there and they did, he did an awesome job with what he'd had done on the parking lots. And just chatting with him about, you know, something small, something very basic. The Harbor Master was even talking about like one of those Amish buildings that they, you know, they build that you can buy it.
Yeah, the shop thing.
And that or like a one-car garage, you know, that, that size of a building just to be able to put there, I think we had talked about before, I know in all of the conversation, that the foundation could be saved, but not in a million after seeing that it is, it's cracked, it's toast. There's not a bit of it that'll be able to be saved, but I think, you know, where we found a spot that was pretty level, I think with pretty minimal groundwork, you'd be able to put a slab in there and keep it pretty low cost and it'll still be elevated a couple of feet, but you won't notice it with the taper coming in to it, I think. I think it's a, it would be nice to get it moving forward at least just so that it doesn't get kicked down the road another five or six years, but what about ARPA funds?
So we do have ARPA funds. I just have to do more research on whether or not it would be an allowable use.
I thought they took it-
If it's a normal governmental use, it's usually allowed, but-
How much is left there?
Around thirty-eight. There's more in the fund that you've reserved some for other uses of that that's been made.
I've never been in the garage. I'm in a shop and it says bait office. Can you, um, could you put Harbor Master offices in that building also or no?
Um, we talked about it, but I think it's-
I have never, okay, okay. I mean, I've never been in there.
That's a short of it, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's handled the wrong way to see.
Okay.
It's, it's rough, but it's pressure washable. It's a good, it'd be a nice workshop, so I don't think you would wanna put your desk in there anymore.
Okay.
But it's-
Hezmat, Hezmat.
I will say, but in the house, in the house, quite fine.
Better than the house, oh god. Okay.
So I was just thinking that the money from Versant should probably go to like a more general town bakery stuff. Because that shouldn't be going to the Wharf Fund because not, you know, most of the town doesn't use that.
Yep.
So I, but-
Well, I think if removing the house, like Jesse said, split the bill on that and then if we can pull some out of the Wharf Fund, some out of the Harbor Fund, additional, you know, to start some of this construction or the, or the groundwork, what I guess is what, after we looked, Eric, if you look, so there's the middle parking lot, you call it now, and then there's the septic, and then there's the house, and there's all kinds of stuff in those, it's all like overgrown bushes.
Right.
If you clean that up and just prep for a, a pad to be poured, I think that would need enough to make it look, look nice and that really wouldn't cost much at all, so.
Two other things we've talked about, as I mentioned, the current budget has ten thousand dollars going to the Wharf Capital Reserve. And I said when I was going over the agenda with Jamie, maybe this year where you do have projects going or that you'd like to do, maybe you don't put the ten thousand towards the reserve this year. The reserve balance is around twenty-one, so it's not like it's close to its goal or, you know, it's just a general reserve for Wharf, Wharf Capital. But if you have a project where you can use, better use the ten this year.
But that was set there for the project of matching the FEMA grant to rebuild the town dock, right?
No.
No.
Oh, that's what we-
We haven't started the idea.
No. No, no. That'll be in your next, next year's budget. So you could reduce it. We've reduced it before when the fund has been too low to contribute to it. The other thing, if you want to talk about it, we've talked about if we needed to get along with, for some project at the Wharf where interest rates are so high, the voters could choose to authorize the loaning of the Wharf Fund money from the surplus fund and pay back themselves, considering being interested by, the auditors have quoted that as well, so. If you want to think about that for your warrant for this town meeting.
That's a good idea, actually.
That's the best idea.
If we have a million dollars in the, the surplus fund and if the harbor needs fifty thousand or forty if you didn't put any and we just capped it at that, then why not do it and just have it pay you back over top? I think that would be the easiest.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Have any, do you want us to, me to just bring a proposed, you'll review the warrant next week, do you want me to just propose upgrading the term of whatever you can open it next week or do you want to set it around?
Well, you would need to, we would need to know what the project's gonna cost us. We just, we don't know that exactly, correct?
No.
So.
I think I would just cap it, no, Eric, at like, where, for what we're doing, even if, for now, if you have to tow the shack that's on the dock up there, put it on the pad and say, there you go, that's good for a year until at least it's need and depth and off the docks.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
It is, you know, and that would be fine with me. I think, I'm always a fan of not having like a, an Amish building. I'd rather have a one-car garage so it's actually fastened to the sill plate and everything else, but same thing, a one, a small building like that's not gonna cost that much money. It's basic is what he's talking.
Yeah, sounds good.
I think cap it.
That's what I'd do.
What, how do you determine the interest rate?
Zero.
It's you because you're proposing it.
Yeah.
You could, you could do zero or-
I would do zero. I mean, honestly, Eric, it's, it's all coming out of the, here.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if there was a standard to that or not. Zero sounds great, right?
You pull it out of one pocket, put it in the other, so that's-
Same checkbook.
Yeah, don't make the payments, you don't want us foreclosing on the work.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you did forty thousand and you did it by how many years, five, six years?
Five years of eight thousand a year.
Yeah.
Can they make enough money to make it eight thousand dollars? I mean, I'm just, can they pay it back?
Even if you did it over ten, that's worth it.
Okay, I, I mean, yeah, either way, I just, I know that, I struggle with money down there on any given day, so.
Yeah. You don't need to probably have the terms in the warrant anyway, do you?
Yeah.
Do you? The payback period? Okay. Make it ten.
And I wouldn't be as in favor of this for general stuff around the dock, but where's the Harbor Master shack? I mean, it's something that we have to have. The town needs it no matter what and-
We gotta get rid of that building.
Yeah, that, that, no, I mean, and one thing we did say, all the windows, we've heard it before, that people have said they've ran the windows in the front. So Jesse has made plans to have someone on the crew take those windows out so they can be reused in a new building.
Good.
There's a half a dozen nice windows. They're not even cased on the inside, so they're just popping out from the outside and they're good.
They're gonna be healthy enough in there doing it?
I don't know about that. I don't know.
Sounds like that's gone downhill a lot since I saw her last, it's pretty bad.
It is really bad.
What do you need, Jesse?
Um, do you want to leave the ten thousand in the capital or take it out of the budget?
I think take it out if we're gonna do this this year to try to get that down.
Do you think we need fifty or could we ask for thirty from the surplus and use the ten thousand? Like, what do you think?
I would do forty and then use the ten and then you get done what you get done.
If, if we take it out of the surplus and we don't use it all, can we put it back in the surplus? Yeah. Well, I guess you just pay it off, right? You use that to pay off itself, right?
Yeah, yeah. So if you're taking out the ten, your motion for the budget just needs to go down ten, down to twenty-four.
For the Wharf Fund?
For the Wharf Fund?
Yeah.
Twenty-four, seven sixty-nine.
Yeah.
I'm good?
Yeah.
I motioned to tentatively accept the Wharf Fund budget for total expenditures of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars in the FY twenty-five budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to tentatively accept the Wharf Fund budget for total expenditures of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars in the FY twenty-five budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I motioned to tentatively accept the Harbor Fund budget for total expenditures of seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars in the FY twenty-five budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to tentatively accept the Harbor Fund budget for total expenditures of seventy-nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars in the FY twenty-five budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh, motioned to tentatively accept the SealCo Fund budget for total expenditures of six thousand, three dollars in the FY twenty-five budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to tentatively accept the SealCo Fund budget for the total expenditures of six thousand, three dollars in the FY twenty-five budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Is that all you need, Jesse? And then you'll bring something to us next meeting for the terms of that?
Yep.
Okay.
The proposed warrant.
Okay. Alright, now we are, oh, do you need anything for the town, for the Wharf House?
Um, yeah, if you want to make motion to remove it now and use the Harbor and Wharf Fund for that extent.
Okay.
I make a motion to request the town manager to contract removal of the Wharf House for sixty-five hundred dollars, equally split between Harbor and Wharf Fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to ask the town manager to have a contract there, remove the Wharf House for the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars and to split that bill between the Wharf and Harbor Funds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
That's exciting.
I know.
It's a big deal, right?
Yeah, I know, it is. Very cool.
Yeah.
Oh, even the little debt that was in front, like before, I thought, I was like, oh, that's, you know, could be used for something, that's completely, there's nothing left of it. Um, next we have the FY twenty-five budget. Are we all set for all these this part?
Yes, if you're all set, those are based on your last meeting. The, you'll see at the beginning there, there's a new, you expressed the desire to have the law enforcement question that you settled on last week asked at the beginning of the meeting. So due to the fact that number could change, it needs to be separate from the protections article anyways. So I've put it, listed it first as a article entitled law enforcement and then you go on. So your protections budget does not include the police coverage. Other than that, everything adds up to the numbers that you-
So protections is, um, fire and ambulance and animal.
Fire and ambulance.
And.
You guys good?
I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to request the following amounts in the cost centers listed on the two thousand twenty-four annual town meeting warrant. Law enforcement, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Administration, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Protections, two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Debt services, zero dollars. Recreation, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and two dollars. Public works, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty. Uh, general assistance, one thousand dollars. Committees, six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Donations to nonprofit organizations, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred. Uh, solid waste, two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Contingency, sixteen thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Transfers to reserves, two hundred and forty-two thousand. Uh, transfer to library fund, ninety-four thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. Uh, other revenues, one million, sixty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Second.
Do I have to read that all over?
Yep.
As written by Eric.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded to approve the budget FY twenty-five budget as written by Eric, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I think he's wrapping up with the executive session stuff.
Yeah.
They're better than the executive session. Well, that's the only reason I did that, get out of here.
All right, um, oh, we have town managers report.
No.
No, come on.
Yeah.
All right.
We've seen you every week, we know what you're doing, we know what you're up to.
All right, projects of interest in the last two weeks, I attended the Acadian Disposal District meeting, finished my annual report letter, uh, worked on meeting prep, uh, storm follow-up from the March tenth storm, uh, interviewed for a janitor position and met contractors at the Wharf. Uh, office staff, Dirk was busy with the election, um, election follow-up, DMV report, uh, meeting follow-up at minutes, uh, assisting the Harbor Master with, uh, morgue bills, working on the annual report, submitted the town meeting ballot. Public Works cleaned up the trap pile by the garage, um, road repair on Dodge Turn Road, fuel filter changed on the case, uh, housekeeping, uh, checked roads, um, during the storm, opened up the roads after the storm, retreated them, picked up new tires and blades from the lawn tractor, um, helped the Harbor Master clean up at the Wharf parking lot from the storm, removed brush from lighthouse in Longus Point, cleaned up back beach, uh, reinstalled the sign that, um, the ocean knocked down, removed some signs from the Wharf House, um, moved blocking from the old dump, um, down to the Wharf for the parking lot and cut and removed brush, uh, from the upper parking lot at the Wharf, swept the parking lot here at the town office, uh, changed the oil in the case and built a waste chain. The Harbor Master attended training, uh, three days at, um, MMA in Castina. Parking lot cleaned up at the Wharf, uh, Wharf, uh, cleaned up from the storm, cleaned up around the dumpster, the dumpster was moved up by the garage, uh, resettled MCM, regarding disconnecting power to the Wharf House and met with contractors and I, um, load repairs on the March road, load is gonna be switched out with the lawn at the Wharf and just worked on sending up the morgue bills, and in the next, um, week I'll be working on the morgue and town meeting preparations.
Great, thank you, Jesse. Suggestions for the next meeting? Date for the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next regular meeting for Monday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, five P M.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, excuse me, confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, five P M at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion adjourned.
I guess.
All in favor?
Third.